Excuse me if you would please stand and help us recite the national anthem. How about we do the pledge of allegiance? Pledge of allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its hands.
We will now call the meeting to order. Thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight. We'll start with approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any concerns or issues with the agenda that you want to have addressed? And if not, can I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion to approve.
I will second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Now, with regard to the consent agenda, anyone have any concerns with regard to the minutes? How about the warrants and the amount of $102,574.67?
Yeah, I've got a question on those.
Okay. Let's just go ahead and go to that then.
Okay. The very last line on the last page is for Sarah Yutzy for October services.
That is the...
Oh, go ahead, Margot.
That's a merchant helper that they hired, maximum 8,000 for the year.
Okay. Oh, okay. Gotcha. Yes.
I think that's the bed tax money.
Yes.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Anything else?
No, that was it.
Okay. Anything else from anyone else with regard to the warrants? Payroll? Anyone have any questions, issues about payroll or the October monthly financial? If not, can I have a motion for approval of the items contained within the consent agenda?
I move that we approve those items within the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, by call. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion approved. With regard to folks who are here that might wish to make comment about what's on the agenda for action tonight, we may or may not take action with regard to expending funds to develop a downtown historical district. We may or may not purchase a truck. And those are really the only potential action items that I'm aware of. So anyone wish to speak to any of that? If not, we will move on. And we come to you then, Mark.
We have Mr. Ben Moore here tonight, who can make a presentation on completing your downtown historical district and then had done work in Council Grove, Emporia, and multitude of town, other towns, and he'll go through the pros, cons, and the advantages of it and probably have a proposal for your next meeting to finish up.
Okay.
The historical work that already started.
Mr. Moore, if you don't mind coming over to the microphone, please. We livestream these, so we want to try to make sure people that are watching online can hear.
Okay. I'll try to use good language and not make any mistakes.
Our ratings go up if you don't use good language.
Well, if you guys don't remember, in 2019, I think COVID era, we did a downtown historic resource survey for you. That is essentially the first step with the state Historic Preservation Office to establish a downtown district. Okay? So there was a lot of work that went into that. We even established what we thought could be a district for that. And we held a few public meetings as well during that process. And that is one of the things in this next step that is very important, is to have several public meetings for input, because every property owner in the potential district is notified by mail eventually from the state. So it's important to get everybody on board and understand all the benefits and the downsides, too. There, it's always a double-edged sword with a historic district. We think it's something that is very valuable for a community this size. It really helps construction dollars. So no matter what happens when you do construction, and this year, in a historic old building, it's going to cost about $200 a square foot or more. It doesn't matter if you're here or in Wichita or in Emporia. I don't think you're going to get it less than that. It's just, that's just the way it is. You know, toilets cost so much, plumbers cost so much, it just is. And the opportunity here, and it's really nice the way the state has this set up, it's a tiered system. So a community like yourselves actually would get 40% of qualified cost back to that property owner in historic tax credits. Now, if you're at a larger community, say like Emporia, it's not 40%, it's 30%. And then if you're in a town like Manhattan, it's only 25%. So it's a tiered system. I give kudos to the state for doing that, because it makes a lot of sense, because I've worked a lot in Council Grove and lived just north of there. It's a lot harder there than it is in Emporia to make things happen. So having that potentially for property owners is a big benefit. So you have the state tax credits. With a historic district, you would also have the federal historic tax credits as well. And those are 20%. That's federal law. So on a project, a potential building owner could get 60% back at the end of the day. Now, it's not, it's a tax credit, so it's a little different than other things, but the state tax, historic tax credit law is set up very nice. You can liquidate those very easily with the state. So they're, in other words, they're transferable, very, very easy. So property owners, a lot of times, will utilize that. And on larger projects, banks like to buy them. So there's a great market for it. So people can get cash in their pocket after, after the construction project. So that's the pluses. The minuses are other people's monies, other people's rules, right? So you have to follow the Secretary of Interior standards for rehabilitation. So there's rules with that. There's certain things you can and can't do to a historic building to meet those guidelines and to meet the threshold to get those tax credits. So a lot of times, there's a preservation consultant involved or an architect who knows that lingo and can help building owners follow the right path to make sure they get those tax credits. So there are hoops, and that's, that's the downside. But I see it as a positive thing, because it, really with the state, it helps get a level playing field, I feel, for small communities in Kansas. So like I said, you know, we completed the historic resource, resource survey in 2019. The next step would be to actually prepare the district nomination, review this at a public meeting, would be the smart thing to do as well, to talk about the district shape, size, what buildings are included within those boundaries. And that's in that report we did in 2019.
Can I, do you mind if I ask you a question?
Oh, you bet. You bet.
The one that was done in 19, I think, and I could be wrong, but I think it, in terms of going east, it stopped at Luda Creek. I don't think it crossed the creek. Is that?
That's correct.
Okay. If we wanted to modify that, is it still doable?
Oh, yeah. That's all part of the process. You guys have to be on board for the district, and you want to make sure the, the community's on board with those boundaries, too.
Okay.
So that, that's all part of the process.
That, we've got a city-owned museum that's on the east side of the creek, and then what, I think they bill it as the only, the oldest school building in the state that's still being used for school.
Oh.
Which can be good or bad, depending on how you look at it, but it's on that side of the creek, so.
Well, you know, schools and cities can use that by selling those tax credits. We've seen that the city of Emporia uses it all the time, and they, they, they don't use the tax credits, but they sell them, and it helps fund projects.
We put air conditioning wide auditorium, it's all above the ceiling, that we, we got, at that time, 25%.
Yeah.
25% tax credits, which, which we sold.
And here, your air conditioner goes out, 40%. The threshold is it has to be a $5,000 project or larger. On the, on the state tax credits. Just not trying to complicate things, but to do the federal tax credit projects, it's usually a bigger project to qualify. So some of the other things, once we would prepare the draft nominate, draft nomination, and we do a little more research on the final buildings that'll be in that district from what we did before, we submit that to Kansas SHPO. They'll give us feedback on what they want to see, they disagree or agree with certain things. We would communicate with you what those are, make those modifications, and it would go back to SHPO. And we have a great relationship with SHPO. We know we would get that approved, and then it would go to the Historic Resources Board for final vote. And once that's approved, it would be sent to the National Park Service. And so that time takes about 12 to 18 months. So it's not a short process. And there's a lot of time for community input, which, again, I, I can't emphasize enough, it is very important to, to have that engagement done and to have a few meetings where people can understand what it is, because they are notified once it goes to the Historic Resources Board about the district. And it's always best that everybody's on board and everybody understands what we're doing ahead of time.
So you're talking about scheduling and publicizing what, however many, two, three, whatever, public meetings, invites public, that's a...
Yeah. It's something that we would answer questions about, what, what are the tax credits, how it can help projects, those type of things. And we would talk about, you know, the, the proposed district with whatever expansions you guys are talking about right now as well. The buildings within the district, which ones are contributing and which ones would be considered non-contributing. And that means they don't qualify for the tax credits, the non-contributing ones. And there were some in the footprint that were non-contributing.
Okay.
And that's because of the current condition of them in terms of architectural style, it's been modified in a way that doesn't, doesn't work for the state standards. I would say, though, always there are ways to get buildings contributing in the future. Say, we've done this in Emporia and Council Grove, where a building's a non-contributor, and some modifications can be done to it to get it contributing. You just have to work with the state and do, do all the right things, and then it opens the door for a larger project and, and help with that funding.
So within the footprint of the district, there would likely be buildings that are in it but not part of it?
Well, they're, they're still considered in it, and when you have a building permit within that district, there is a review that SHPO does. It's a state law review. It's pretty light duty. They're just trying to make sure damage to that historic integrity is not happening.
So let's say that, that someone has a metal building that's within the footprint, that I don't know whether it was constructed 10 years ago or 60 years ago, but now it's a metal-covered building.
Sure.
Do they, but they're looking to, they're going to make changes to their building. They're not necessarily applying for historic preservation money.
Right.
Do they have to jump through some hoops that they wouldn't otherwise?
Typically, what happens, it's on the city to submit that to the state law review.
Okay.
For a built, normally, when you get a building permit, they have to submit some paperwork to you all to obtain a building permit. They go through code review, and during that same time period, that's sent for the state law review. And on something like that, I think you'd get a response at about, you know, five minutes from Robert at the state. He would just say, yeah, you're good to go.
Okay.
They're, they're, they're Kansans, they're easy to work with, they're good people. I would say that. There shouldn't be a fear on, on that. They're really trying to help small towns.
Practicality exists within this, okay.
Yeah, yeah. You, 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 you bet. But if, if we're talking about, hey, the Elgin Hotel, it's beautiful, it was done, you know, beautifully historic. If somebody, let's say, decided to put metal siding over the entire thing and cover it all up, the state would say, no, you can't, you shouldn't do that.
But there is a local, even in that case, would be local pill process.
That's right. At the end of the day, the city council can't override that.
What is SHPO?
The state, I'm sorry, the State Historic Preservation Office.
Okay.
It's one, architects start saying acronyms, I apologize.
You thought it was an evil clown, didn't you?
No, no. I, I just, I think it's a good opportunity for the building owners in downtown, something to consider, for sure. And like Mark pointed out, there's a way around everything if you've got an issue.
And I talked to Ben earlier today, you can include this building in your district also. So if you put in new air conditioning, for example, that'd be a relatively easy one. And you get 30% or 40% back.
40%, yeah. So that's, it's a good, it's a good deal for operational costs, you know, because you got to fix air conditioners.
So we need, if we want to go that route, we would need someone, and Mark is saying that you're the right someone, to, I guess, put together the final proposal that would then go to the historic preservation people.
That's right. Yeah, but you're kind of on that, you completed the first step in 2019, and we would be doing that, that second step, preparing and submitting the district nomination.
Is that kind of...
If you want to, we bring an agreement back to you for Mr. Moore's services in a future meeting. You'd hire him first, and then he'd prepare that for you.
Who did the first step in 2019?
We, we did.
You did? Okay.
Yeah.
And then did we just not go forward with it as a city, or?
Well, I think COVID happened.
Okay. Okay. That's probably enough said. Okay. I was just...
I, I think everybody didn't want to do a public meeting or didn't want to do anything else. We're like, we're going to stay in our house for a while.
You mentioned that you'd worked on some buildings in Council Grove or, or the district in Council Grove. Did you have something to do with some of the buildings as well?
Yeah, yes.
Did you, are you the guys that did the old Council Grove National Bank building that was the McClinic Law Office?
Yes.
That, yeah, okay. Yeah. It's, it's a bookstore now. It's really cool.
And the, the building owner gets good revenue from the apartments.
Oh, I didn't even realize, there's apartments upstairs?
Upstairs and an Airbnb in the back, and then two apartments in the basement, actually.
There should be a little plaque up by the, the, the back, that little side entrance there, that, yeah. That was my first law office.
Oh, really?
Yeah. So there ought to be a historical sign.
Yeah. No, no, with the housing shortage in Kansas, there, there's lots of opportunities, I think, in downtown historic districts for apartments, and that does reach the next generation in a way that is pretty unique and something we've seen successful everywhere. So I would say that, that's another plus with it, too.
Can you folk, give me, this is going to sound weird, but focus on the minuses a little bit. Is there something you, other than what you've mentioned?
Well, I, I mean, other people's money, other people's rules. Some people are, in Kansas, are very libertarian, and they don't want any rules at all. And that's, you know, some people have an issue with that. That is the negative side. Now, it's just, when you really look at the numbers in a community, I would suspect like Marion, I know in Council Grove, you got to have it to make the numbers work, because in Council Grove, we have appraisal issues. You know, if a building costs $2 million to renovate, in Council Grove, it won't appraise for $2 million. So how do you bridge that gap? Because the bank won't come to the table unless you've got something else, you know? And that, tax credits are one of the ways, because some of the buyers of those tax credits, you know, come to the table, too, because they're institutions. So I guess that's a plus. I'm going to a plus, but, sorry.
If you can turn a minus into a plus, that's okay.
You know, always the building code stuff, you know? That's the other thing we see. I can't remember if you guys have the existing building code here as well, along with the, just the normal building code. The, just the, just having, if you only have the normal building code, there's not as many loopholes, is it, if you have the existing building code? And it really helps some of the downtown buildings. I would say that's something...
We might want adopting that.
Okay, that's what you...
Excuse me, we don't have it currently, but only by reference.
Yeah.
Only by reference.
Yeah. There, there's a lot of little things that happen in historic buildings, like you're not going to move a stair, and you need to, and, hey, there's different compliance methods you can do. But that, that is a challenge sometimes for, I think, building owners when that's not adopted, to, when you really get into one of these projects, there's just so many code challenges to make it safe. You have to make it safe. But there's different ways to, to apply it, and the existing building code was made really for downtown districts. So I think it's something to, you should consider in conjunction with that. Even if you didn't do the tax credits, I would definitely look at adopting the existing building code.
Well, part of the reason that I'm interested in seeing us do this is, I think we have people that either own buildings or would consider owning some of the buildings on Main Street and doing something to them, but it's just too expensive. Just the, just putting a new roof on top of them will kill you.
Absolutely. Hundred, hundred percent agree. And, and, you know, I mentioned the plumber example, I think that's true for all the trades. You know, electricians, roofers, it, it is very expensive, and it doesn't matter if they're working in Wichita or Marion, you're going to see that price point. And that's where I really like what the state did on, on the state tax credits, tiering it, because it can help a smaller community in a, in a larger way.
I think I heard you say, when you said 40%, you said qualified costs. Are there things that would not fall under that, right, under the 40%?
Yes. There, there are things that don't qualify. So appliances don't qualify. Drapes and shades don't qualify. If you think of, if you turned a building upside down and kind of shook it, and the stuff that fell out, you know, that's not permanent, wouldn't qualify. But all the plumbing, the electrical, mechanical, the, the real bones of a building, you know, that, that all is there and qualifies. But, you know, things that might last a year or two, they, they don't consider that, it doesn't meet the IRS threshold.
Are there certain qualifications you have to meet for contractors who do the work?
That's really dependent on your guys' local, how you handle contractors locally.
Anything?
You did say one of the cons was time. I'm sure everything, you know, takes time. If, if somebody wants a project done and paperwork submitted, is there quite a lengthy process in order to get that started to completion?
It's gotten better, but it's not, it, it is, it is the government.
Yeah.
The, the state...
Hey, buddy, where do you think you are right now?
The, the state is usually fairly good about turning things around in 30 days. But if it's a state and federal project, it goes to the National Park Service in DC. And, you know, that, that can take a while. It can take 90 days. But it is a substantial amount of money if you're doing a larger project.
Right.
The state ones, if it's a smaller project, it works really well, and they're really good about turning those around. But folks in DC, I don't think anybody controls, so.
Other questions for Ben? So, I mean, I already tipped my hand, I, I just think this could do a lot of good for our downtown and, and the periphery. It's not just Main Street. Mark, your, your idea is to ask Ben to give us a proposal that we can then review and, and potentially accept or possibly deny?
We have a ballpark price where to finish it, what needs to be done in order to submit it. And it's, you know, I've checked around, it seemed very reasonable compared to the people in the marketplace.
Okay.
They want, we can have him formalize something.
So are the tax credits, it's just off a renovation? So let's say that somebody puts a building up for sale and somebody goes in and buys it. You don't get any tax credit back from the building itself, it's just the renovation and improvements on it?
That, that, just basically any new construction that's done.
Gotcha.
Or repairs.
Gotcha.
But if you're going to buy it, you're probably going to want to fix it up.
Well, yeah. I was just...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
And on, on the federal side, there's a bit of a formula where you have to spend more than what you bought the building for to qualify at all on the federal side.
Gotcha.
So that, and that's why it usually lends to bigger projects.
Yeah. Unless there are other questions, thank you very much for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Do you know your schedule? Would you be able to, do you want Mark, I mean, Ben to be here next meeting?
If you want him here, I'm sure he can, we can work that out. But you already heard the presentation, he'll submit it, he'll give us an agreement.
Council, would you, can just take a look at the presentation, or do we need to ask Ben to come back?
No, I think you can look at the presentation.
Just if you'd stay in touch with Mark, and, and then I guess worst-case scenario, if we have questions that we feel like we really need you here to answer, then we'll ask you to come back.
You bet.
The meeting after that.
No problem.
I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Back to you, Mr. Mark McInerney.
We'd like you to postpone this until the next meeting. We're doing some research on it.
Okay. Public forum. Anyone here wish to address the, address the council about anything at all?
Question would be to Ben, would the courthouse be able to sell tax credits if that was included? Did I understand what you're saying? Or county courthouse would it?
I don't even have what, I'm, I apologize.
Would the county courthouse be able to sell tax credits, like you said, to school would be?
Any entity within the district that has a contributing building would be able to...
By understanding that, right, if the county would do a project on Florida, that would qualify, but then you just sell them, like, not being a tax...
It's just like, just like...
Just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, like how the city of Emporia does that on William White Auditorium, they do that all the time.
Our audience is not hearing any of this, but he's going to be mad.
Yes, the courthouse would qualify.
Yes.
Under this.
Thank you, sir. All right, let's go to reports from staff. We'll start with Mark.
At your next meeting, John Duredoff will be here to get, you know, just to help start the next process or the next step of the process to advertise and search for a new city administrator. We have a bid award, I believe, the truck should be back on the historical district if we're ready, and those are, check four items.
I got a survey from the league, from, John. Has everyone received that?
Yeah, I got that, I have it completed, yeah.
Yeah, okay. It says it takes 15 minutes. It took me longer than that, but it's not hard. It's just a matter of deciding what you want to answer. Okay, go ahead. Is that it?
That's it.
Janet?
I just need you to appoint a KPP voting delegate.
The Kansas Power Pool... What's the name of the meeting, Mark? I can't find my notes.
KPP Energy Annual Meeting...
Yeah, I got it right here. Is Thursday, November 21st at 10:00 AM. You can appear in person or, I assume, it's online, so I assume it's by, no, it's by a Teams, which is another, another Zoom kind of thing. We need to have someone appointed. My thought, guys, was, or guys and gal, to appoint Mark as our representative and allow him, if, for whatever, actually to... him if, for whatever, actually to appoint the city administrator with the understanding that if for some reason the city administrator can't attend, that he could designate someone in his place. Which could be Steven or I guess one of you, if one of you were interested and wanted to be that designee. Or if one of you wanted to be our, our person. Thoughts?
Was your date right on that? December 13th wasn't what I had down.
Yeah.
Yeah, December 13th.
December 13th, is that me? I don't know if that's when you had to have somebody.
November 29th.
I know, November 29th, yeah, I have to have it back by then.
November 21st.
Why does it shows the 29th on that as?
Voting delegate form for turn to the KPE.
Yeah.
Well, it just got it. Well, it doesn't matter, I guess, the bomb light is.
Did you have this in your packet? What are you looking at?
I got, I'm looking at what KPP sent me.
Sent today.
I don't think I got that.
I didn't hear was that voting delegate form and it shows the 29th.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I see what you're looking at.
Yeah.
That's what threw me off.
That's this.
I don't know what he's got.
This is an email.
Well, I've got Kevin Burkholder, is a man who everyone trusts and loves, sitting here saying, it says November 21st.
I have it here too.
It says November 21st.
But that's kinda, we're kinda off in the weeds on that. The question is, who are we gonna have as our delegate?
Have we done, have we used the city administrator in the past? I don't remember.
I do not know.
You think so?
Yeah, we used, Brogan was our last one.
That's what I was kinda thinking, but thank you. Yeah.
Is there general consensus to me making that appointment? Okay, Mark, you're, you are our official delegate.
And we're naming two alternates also, just for the record.
We need to name two alternates?
Whether the form said, there's on there, I would add two, just in case something happened to anybody.
Well, if that, that takes away your ability to name a designee, unless you wanna designate one of the two alternates, right?
Yeah, that's what I thought you were.
I would propose that Steven would be a logical one of those.
I concur with that.
Do we need that in any formal motion or anything?
I think it's a merile appointment with consent of the council.
Okay.
Yeah. And I put, if you only had two, that'd be perfect. I don't know if Steven will be here.
I'm looking, hang on a second. Collet? That's your committee.
What about?
Electrical.
Yeah.
So, you'd be the second alternate.
Oh, after Mark and Steven?
After everybody we could say.
You're the last ditch, you're the last ditch.
You, you okay with that?
Sure.
Is the council okay with it?
Yes, I'm okay with that.
All right. Thank you, Janet, anything else?
Nope.
Let's go back to Steven, who's gonna add to his resume. He's our first alternate for Kansas Power Pool. Anything from you?
Nothing, Morgan.
Okay. You're here. Margo?
Ollie, dolly Christmas, November 30th, all day. Come see us, it'll be fun. Parade at 5:30.
Zach?
Nothing.
James?
I don't have nothing much.
If you're gonna talk, you gotta come over here.
Oh, man, just go, just go talk then.
He's got nothing, no.
I, you know.
So, there was a lot of questions about the State Historical Society and their response and stuff like that. And I worked quite a bit there in Council Grove with the State Historical Society and, and presenting projects. Ben was sometimes, the bigger projects, Ben would bring those drawings. 30 days, we would hear back in 30 days, you know? Then after 30 days, they, the project could proceed. So, this, you know, there is a time limit on that, so.
Yeah, appreciate that. He said they turned around pretty quick, but.
They do.
What, maybe quick to one person isn't to the act, so. Okay, anything, we'll start with Amy, anything from you?
Um, no, actually.
You're in good health again?
I am, just not my kids.
Zach, I don't have anything.
I, I don't have anything.
Um, do we have a?
Oh, thank you for reminding me.
Yeah, workshop session coming up.
We had scheduled a study session for November 25th, I believe.
Yeah, week from today.
Do we, and, and, you know, the question is, well, what are we gonna talk about? We, we've got a number of things that certainly we could get you an agenda in advance if council wants to do it. I, I, I understand it's holiday season or coming into it. But what are your thoughts? Do you wanna do a study session next Monday?
We haven't done one for a while, so I, I would like to pick it back up again.
I'd probably be in favor of doing one.
It's fine, man.
Kevin? Do you wanna stick with 5 o'clock? I know, you know, just 'cause it's a study session doesn't make Kevin or Zach's drive back here any shorter or quicker. So, you wanna stick with 5?
I'm good with 5, yeah.
Okay. So, 5 o'clock next Monday, November 25th, study session. When you show up, we'll tell you where it's gonna be, but I'll, I'll tell you right now, I'm pretty sure we'll just do it upstairs in the, the old council. Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing. No, I already did public forum, so motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second?
I'll second it.
On favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, nay? Thank you, we're adjourned.
That's at 5, we're doing that at 5 o'clock?
At 5. You what?
I still have it on my schedule.
Yeah, I got it on mine too. And I'm sorry, didn't think to bring it up.
Thanks for reminding me.
I had not put that in there.
Well, it was a questionable one, I only did it.
Probably what I used to, I, today I made sure to let my computer update so that I didn't have to do like Zach did. And then I was looking at my packet and thought, well, I'll print out the, the agenda, you know, rest I'll bring on the computer. And I've still, I mean, I don't know how you make something stop printing once it's decided. It printed the entire package. Well, I didn't intend to, I wanted to print the front page. And I know how to just tell me, you know, page is 1 to 3, page 10, whatever.
Can't hold it on the road hardly.
I think that'd be a huge benefit for that.
I think so too.
Where'd they go?
Who, what?
I never signed anything.
Mike packed them up.
Mike, did you pack them up?
I unpacked them, please.
Look, when I'm in a meeting, you guys, you can't just hand me crap.
We did, we did, the meeting was over.
And you looked at me.
Amy reminded me.
I think, how, you guys are so dumb. How many meetings is it gonna take for you to figure this out?
That is it, I just need your signature.
Need ours too.
It was funny. Are you coming in tomorrow to sign checks?
I can.
Okay. If you can't, just email.
Just if I, you know, well, actually, I think I have a MAC meeting tomorrow, so I'll be up here for lunch anyway.
Okay. I'll hold everything, I think I need, have some minutes I need to decide.
Okay.
All right, thank you. There's that.
Thank you.
You know, my comments, they are possible for.
Thank you, Tim.
Dave? Question for you?
Uh, for what?